Now move to our regular Board of Education meeting, 1623. Open session for Board of Board meeting, 1623 is called to order. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Andia, a second by Kristi. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. At this time, I'd like to invite our Sparing students to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. We will move into the special recognitions portion of this evening. Tonight, we are recognizing Sparing Middle School and we'll hear their learning reports. I would now like to turn it over to Dr. Lauren Boger, Principal of Sparing Middle School.
All right, good evening tonight. Welcome, welcome to our Sparing night. First up, we would like to do our special recognitions. So first up, we would like to call up Andrea Hendrickson. Come on up. Yeah, face this way, this way and this way. All right, I present to you our Support Staff of the Year, Andrea Hendrickson. We are thrilled to honor her. She's our Support Staff of the Year. She's our front desk receptionist. She is our first warm smile that greets student staff and families each year. She's an attendance guru, welcome center expert, and she keeps everything running smoothly while always staying cool, calm, and professional. Thank you for keeping this balanced approach and taking care of our kids, for outreach to our PTOs and our community, and thanks for bringing the family tonight. One more time for Andrea Hendrickson.
Congratulations Andrea. We have a gift certificate for $30 to our online school board. And then we have a special recognition. Congratulations.
Ella back here is our intern. I have technically hired her to be our intern. She is an LHS student, so give it up for Ella. She's going to be taking pictures tonight. Next up, we have our Teacher of the Year, Courtney Sprague. Come on down Courtney. Courtney enters her seventh year as our science teacher. And the fun story is, I hired her for what, ELA and Social Studies? Because I knew what an outstanding teacher she was, and then we were able to move her into her dream role as a science teacher. She is our convassador. She has a gold MacBook. Yeah, she's that special. She leads so many things. Our sixth grade orientation, serves on our building leadership team, and helps me daily with communication as a part of our task force. So thank you so much for this outstanding opportunity to introduce Courtney Sprague, our Teacher of the Year for Sparing Middle. All right, next up on our special recognitions, we have our outstanding students. So first up, please give me a warm welcome for Evan Bailey. Come on up Evan. So every year at Sparing, we have a tradition where we honor our outstanding eighth graders. So let me tell you about what Evan's teachers said about him. He's an exceptional young man who consistently demonstrates the Wings core values in action through positive interactions beyond academics, shining in his PEGS program, but he creates a classroom that is productive and welcoming to all. So congratulations Evan. Evan, do you have something to say about your favorite moment at Sparing?
Um, nothing in particular, but I just think I love how everybody at Sparing is so inviting and welcoming, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Evan's picture time. All right, next up is Evan Cuffrally. Evan, come on up. Give it up for Evan. So Evan is another outstanding eighth grader, and with her confidence, insight, and passion, Evan is already demonstrating the qualities of a future leader. Leadership opportunities are not just in her future, they are made for her. So keep in touch on this one for sure too. Congratulations Evan Cuffrally. Do you have something to say?
Um, I just love how we have such a big unity, and it's like being part of a big family at Sparing.
Congratulations. And also just a final shout out to all of the families for our special recognitions that have also joined us here this evening. Thank you all for being here tonight. All right, it's on. You can hear me?
All right, well, thank you. What a wonderful way to start. I love going first on special recognitions and Board nights. It's a great way to set the tone, and thanks for allowing us to present all of the wonderful things that have happened in the past year, but also goals moving forward into this school year. So as you know, and have heard me talk about before, we have four touchstones here on our compass plan, and our Sparing compass plan with Sparing Life, Instructional Innovation and Design, Best Grading Practices and Personalized Assessment, and Communication. So you will find those highlights in this presentation in the slideshow, as well as the accompanied report that was provided to you. As we move on to the next slide, we start with student growth and achievement. So one I would like to highlight here is NWEA. So as you know, we have moved this year to iReady, but as we look back to last year, I have provided cohort data for you. So this is actually our current freshman class, okay? The class of 29. So you can see the progression in the growth in both ELA and math on NWEA. The numbers, as you can see in the green, are ELA. They continue to progress up in achievement from 65%, 77, and 82. This indicates percentage of students in those top three quintiles of average height, average or high. And then in the yellow, the same progression with 66, 71%, and 75. So just showing you a snapshot of NWEA and that growth over time in that cohort data, okay? On the next slide though, you will see how our goals are going to change and shift a little as we incorporate iReady. Okay, so iReady is replacing NWA at the middle school level. We have already started with the support of everyone on our teams and our systems, everyone from Colin all the way down to teachers and students in planning and implementing this already for our fall assessment window. So we have gone into classes, students have completed the fall assessment window, and now we are looking at this growth piece and goal setting. So what you see here is a sheet in Google Sheets where every student at Sparing Middle School has one of these in their Google Drive, and they've had lessons already starting through ELA and math where they are going in and they are seeing their data for iReady and setting those goals using measurements in that regard. On the next slide as well, you can see how that chart would play out. So you'll see this time next year, how I can bring some of the data in for you over this year's time. So our goal this year is that 80% of our students are at grade level or above on iReady. So that's a new adventure for us, looking at data, but we're really enjoying the new platform, the new systems, and we also look forward to our Professional Learning Day on September 26th, where we have trainers from iReady coming to support our teams. On the next slide, this is probably my favorite one of the presentation. This was a ticket that I provided to students last year for Student Forum in our hangar. And remember, last year I talked about our new core values and what those were going to look like. So in March, we had a Student Forum to finalize those core values. So you can see our Limburg Life Success Skills in action here as one example of Student Forum, of communication, collaboration, that critical thinking about what they wanted their school to be and be grounded in in terms of our core values. We started with Limburg Life Success Skills and Vocabulary as a starting point, and then on the next slide, you can see that we landed on Wings. So Wings is an acronym. The students demanded I had a brand, and it had to be Limburg, it had to be green and gold, it had to be something connected to flyers. So it's Growth, Community, Perseverance, Integrity, and Respect, and those are incorporated more in acrostic style of our Wings core values. Ella, who is also joining us as our intern, has been charged this year with measuring the implementation of these new core values and its impact on our building. So she and I have met probably six times already to come up with these plans, the logo, the branding, and it's really cool to see a high school student help with this real-world experience. And our students are also, I can't brag about them enough, 100% of our students have taken the Wings commitment to Google Form, but they took that, and we are going to celebrate on Thursday because of this monthly achievement. If you'd like to stop by during Wind Time on Thursday, it's going to be a good time. Grade Level Assembly is Thursday. Mark your calendars. Next up, this is data to support all of this amazing work and, you know, all of the things that we did through Forum, all of the relationship buildings that are going on at Sparing Middle School. We continued to surpass the district goal in terms of participation in Panorama. It was 98% and 96% respectively last year in terms of that integration. We really credit our health and fitness teachers because we do administer that Panorama screener, that socio-emotional learning screener through that course. You can see that we are super high in the relationships category once again, but I definitely want to point out the learning strategies. While at the bottom as a category, we made the most gains in learning strategies, and that was a very concerted effort by our counselors who identified students and strategies through lessons during Wind Time throughout the year with pre-assessments, targeted strategies. We even pulled in some avid strategies. If you have heard about avid at the high school, we have been learning about that this year too. So wonderful things. We continue to see some of this continue to grow for us, and just a great celebration with our Panorama data. On the next slide, high-quality teachers, of course we have them, and our Professional Growth Plan, so you might hear me say PGP, a Professional Growth Plan, is a plan that we meet with each of our teachers. We have completed all of those already this year as a building, which is a credit to our Assistant Principals and our coaches for really setting the tone for what these look like for instruction and what we want instruction to look like, especially as it relates to our model of instruction. And so you can see up here, we actually had personalized professional learning last year as it related to those growth plans. So there's a lot of work that goes on to put teachers in different groups, differentiated groups for professional learning. And in the center, you can see with between the red and the blue data, that means everyone was satisfied with their professional learning last November, and that is the greatest number I've had in eight years with like no complaints. It was differentiated, it was amazing, and people really understood how it impacted their instruction and strategies that they could bring back. We look forward to doing a very similar model again when the 26th, on the day that's coming up, and then the afternoon when they're back with us in the building. On the far right, you will see a news byte there that highlights our instructional coach data. We had over, I believe it was 57 rounds of instructional coaching, 14 coaching cycles, and the math department led the way. So a little friendly competition between some of the departments on coaching cycles and rounds. This year, we are upping those goals and saying we want 100% of participation in rounds, many coaching cycles or coaching cycles. So that's a big credit to Kelly Horalic. Thank you for always putting that together for us. She is a rock star. On the next slide, we have employee well-being. Look at that. What is that, 90, 90 something percent there? It's great. Everybody wants to come to work. 96% favorable. I enjoy coming to work. We even have people who work out after school, before school, and that is a true testament to our wellness coordinator. So that's been a wonderful addition. We continue to see that every year and just continue to grow. We have our Zen Den in the building. If you've never been by, I can show you that. Wellness Wednesdays, you know, the staff continues to wear workout gear with kind of that promise to do something to take care of themselves. So just wonderful data in terms of our employees wanting to come to work. On the next slide, student satisfaction. This weekend, I don't know if you saw, but the band did amazing at their competition, right? And it was a sparring sweep of drum majors, by the way, but what just kind of, you know, warms the heart is when I see the smiles of those three drum majors doing such excellent work, I remember the smile there and where it started on their first band performance. So just seeing that satisfaction, yes, it's quantifiable, of course, in Panorama data in terms of their satisfaction, but capturing smiles is probably one of my most favorite things to do as a building principal. Moving across, we continue to take risks with new ideas. We have a coffee cart that was started up last year. Wonderful way for students to practice some of our skills, our essential skills. And then finally, on the right-hand side, if you haven't seen that picture before, I don't know if you know middle schoolers, but they love the unexpected surprise and love the unexpected celebration. So this is one of our band instructors, Adam Spurk, who, this was during March Madness, and you guys know I love basketball, but our band got to participate because Val Parizo's band could not attend. Then the high school band actually jumped in and some of them couldn't attend. So the middle schoolers got the call up and they got to go perform at March Madness. So just opportunities all around that continue that high level of satisfaction. Moving on to our next slide, personalized learning. Last year was our first year where our eighth graders attended the Holocaust Museum. And so in thinking about this and how is this personalized, each reflection, each experience was personal. Each, you know, reflection that they brought back to their learning, they were reading the novel Night, and how they reflected upon the impact on them as an individual was personal. And so we look forward at this trip again. They have a center there called the Impact Lab, so you can see on the far right. Wonderful space, very modern, it has been redone over the years. Just a wonderful day. Children even said thank you to me after the experience. So really cool stuff. We look forward to that for eighth grade. Sixth grade continues that personalized field trip with the ecology trip to Forest Park. And then our seventh graders, there are things in the works potentially going to Topgolf. So we shall see, we shall see how that personalized approach to field trips at the middle school level will continue. So, and then, yeah, here is our, what?
Stuff and how it had to be connected to curriculum, I'm assuming it's going to be math.
No, it's science, force of motion. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I mean, it is math too. Sure, you could, you can do both.
I was kind of wondering how you were going to connect that too.
Yeah, force of motion.
There you go. I was like, all right.
Yes.
We did all this research.
There is it, like Newton's laws and so. Rob Zalinski has already put together with the help of Colin David, our AI director.
Look at you guys using your creativity. Look at that.
And we even have an AI spaces developed for the field trip with Rob Zalinski. He's already put it through AI, giving us ideas, integration, and that kind of a thing. So really looking forward to that trip too, and I know the kids are going to love it. Chaperones. Yes, yes, we will need those for sure, for sure. Hopefully they have us on the ground level. But yes, so yeah. Yeah, I think that, yeah, so I think that was our last slide. Oh, and there's one more. Beth added our Student Board Representative Advisory Group, and this was wonderful. Dr. Mason came over with RJ Del Rosario, former forever Sparing flyer, and the kids had a great time. The only thing that kind of went wrong is RJ had a KU sweatshirt on. That was the only thing. So he was great though. It was so cool to see our kids come back, especially RJ. He was a part of our Echo Club, if you remember me talking about that in previous years. And it was great because I got to tell him that that club that he started received a promising practice as well from Character Plus this past year. So wonderful opportunity for our kids. Thank you Beth for bringing them. Thank you Dr. Mason for this as well. So thank you again for allowing me to speak tonight and share some highlights. If you have any questions, you know where I am. And also, don't forget Thursday, Dr. Walker is going to dress up as Pitbull, so see you there. Any questions or? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rover. So normally, we would turn it over to RJ so he can tell us about the happenings at, on his level, but he's unfortunately not able to make it tonight because he's a band commitment. So his report is available on Board Docs. Now, we do encourage everyone to stay for the full meeting. However, we will take a moment, a pause, so if you would like to leave and exit the room, you are welcome to do that. Now's your time. Okay, we will move on to adoption of the estimated 2025 tax rate. So preceding this meeting, we had our tax rate meeting for the tax rates for 2025, where our CFO, Joe Scheivel, sorry, presented the 2025 estimated tax rates, and citizens were given an opportunity to come and address the board regarding those tax rates. So it is now time for us to vote on the adoption for the estimated 2025 tax rate. Do I have a motion to approve the estimated 2025 tax rates as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Whoa. I have a motion by Julia and a second by Jen. Is that correct? Yeah, okay. Are there any questions from the board that were not addressed in the tax rate hearing? Okay, great. Hearing none. We can vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes seven zero. At this time, we will move to Citizen Communications. We do not have any signed up at this time on the spreadsheet, so we will move on to Communications. So 7.01 Calendar Events, Ms. Voss, turn it over to you.
Okay, it is homecoming week. The homecoming parade is Friday, September 9th, with the football game to follow later that evening. There's no school on September 26th. The Technology Board Advisory is on September 29th, and the Communications Board Advisory is on September 30th. The Facility Advisory will hold its first meeting on October 8th, and both Finance and Student Life Advisories meet on October 9th. The LHS Fall Play, Arsenic and Old Lace, a classic, runs October 9th to 11th. The Sunday Night Lights will be on Sunday, October 12th. On Tuesday, October 14th, we have our next Board Workshop in meeting, and that same week is the Secondary Parent Teacher Conferences, the week of the October 13th.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Report of Meetings. Any Board members have any meetings they attended? I will report that we, most of us went to the MSBA Region 7 meeting that took place at Brentwood School District. While we were there, we learned about some of the new legislation that has come out, specifically cell phones and how to deal with the new cellphone policy in schools, and then some other stuff about taxes and stuff like that. And we won a door prize, I guess. We had, we had over six people there which qualified us for being placed in a drawing where we won a gift certificate for, how much was it? $250. For MSBA, $250. So there we go. Congratulations, everyone. Yeah. Any other, yeah, any other meetings that anyone would like to report on?
I'll just shout out Dr. Lake's Listening and Learning Meetings that are going all across the district. I've attended now three, I think.
It doesn't change.
It doesn't.
You are going to be able to give it soon.
It changes just a little bit. You know, he tailors it to the parts of the community he's talking to. But those have, those have been well, well-received by the different people.
We always host once a year, the former Board of Education members. It's a breakfast. It's not really breakfast, but you bring your coffee and there's some pastries. But anyway, it's always nice to see those who were before us, and it's fun to hear stories for them. And I love when they question Dr. Lake because they like to do that. They like to find out all the information.
Well, and we also had two former superintendents this year as well. So if people don't realize this, Limburg has been around, this is our 76th year, and we have six superintendents in that time. And if you know anything about tenure of superintendent right now, it's getting shorter and shorter. It's a suburban average of about four some years, suburban, or urban is about three. So that just reflects this stability in this community and working together and making sure that we're providing excellent opportunities for our students. But Gary Wright, who served from 1980 to 1990, was there, and then Dr. Simpson was there, who served, I believe, from 2007 to, or 2008 to 2018, and that's who I followed. So three of us, three of the six were in the room. So it was pretty cool.
Okay, any others? Okay, we'll turn it back over to Ms. Voss for review of upcoming agendas. Oh, and announcements. Sorry, is there an announcement tonight?
Yes, there's announcements before agendas. So one announcement, the Student Representative to the Board of Education, applications are open for 2026 representative. Emails with application details were sent to all junior students and parents, all LHS junior students and parents should have gotten an email. Applications and letters of recommendations are due on September 23rd, so that is coming up. If you're interested in that position, don't wait. More information can be found on the district website. And now I can move on to the upcoming meetings for the agendas. So the Board meets again on Tuesday, October 14th. We have a workshop that day as well, so the workshop topics are being planned, but we know that they will include artificial intelligence. If you're interested in that, that's going to be the workshop to come to. The regular agenda includes a second reading and approval request of the 2026-2027 school calendar. For the record items include Parents' Teachers Program Evaluation, Professional Learning Plans, Official Enrollment, and Regular Business Items.
Okay, thank you. We will now watch the MSBA Board Report. Colin?
Welcome to the September edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. A new school year means a first stress test for your budget. Actual enrollment, transportation miles, salaries, benefits, and fixed costs can shift fast. So when do you amend? MSBA Senior Director of School Finance, Linda Quinley, explains what to watch for in the first month of the new school year.
This time of year, it is really in my mind about a first good budget amendment to clean up what you thought might be the case in June, because now we have some final pieces of data that help us do that. Those being, we know what our final assessed valuation is, we know what our tax rates are, and by the end of September, we'll know what our membership count is for the fall, and we start getting some of those big pieces that then tell us what revenue is going to really look like for the year.
Linda says that districts need to communicate budget issues with the community to make the process understandable.
I think that's critically important. It's always time to tell your story, but right now, sharing an understanding around local revenue, I think, is the biggest community message because we are seeing some high increases in assessed valuation. That immediately makes people think their taxes are going way up. So helping your community understand that the Hancock Amendment is there to protect them from that, and how that impacts the net change in their property taxes is huge. I think also helping the community understand and pay attention to what might happen after the state legislature gets done with the work on the formula, and then more importantly even, just because of the variety of lines, paying close attention to federal program dollars, particularly in high-need districts, because the higher-need districts get the larger amounts of federal dollars.
Linda says there are many reasons that districts of every size should take part in long-range financial planning.
I am a huge fan and proponent of simple but clear long-range financial planning, and it's not something a lot of districts have done. Larger districts tend to do it, but I believe that every district, every size in Missouri needs to have a very simple, it doesn't have needs to have a very simple, it doesn't have to be overly complicated, long-range financial planning model, because our commitments are growing based on statute and a variety of things, but our revenues are flattening and/or declining. And so long-range financial planning is just going to set a board up to know, in collaboration with leadership, where and when you might hit some bumps in the road, so that you can be proactive and plan for those ahead of time.
Linda and her team will have a school finance for school board members workshop during the MSBA Annual Conference, as well as multiple concurrent sessions on finance. Speaking of annual conference, registration is still open for the 2025 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials to be held October 23rd through the 25th in Kansas City. The event will once again feature numerous breakout sessions and workshops, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state, the education expo, and another great lineup of general session speakers. Pre-conference sessions start on Wednesday, the 22nd, with the AI in Education Symposium. MSBA's Director of Digital Initiatives, Mark Henderson, says that the event has something for everyone, regardless of your AI expertise or experience level.
AI is transforming education right now. Are you prepared to lead the changes in your district? At this one-day event, we'll explore how AI supports learning and how school leaders like you can lead with confidence. We'll kick off with Kim Carr, co-founder and executive director of Digital for Good and I Can Help, a nationally recognized leader in digital wellness and online safety education. Then you'll experience expert sessions led by practicing educators, technology professionals, legal experts, and student voices covering AI implementation in classrooms, cybersecurity, policy development, career readiness, and more.
Thursday, the 23rd, is filled with workshops and events for new board members and board secretaries, plus timely sessions on finance, parliamentary procedure, and more. The Fall Delegate Assembly will be held on the Friday of Annual Conference. The Delegate Assembly is the chance to have your voice heard on issues surrounding public education as we head toward the next legislative session. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in October for the next MSBA Board Report.
All right, thank you, Colin. We'll move to cabinet updates, so we'll start with Ms. Joel Scheivel.
Yes, we had our finance committee meeting, I guess, last week now, since we're on a odd schedule here. We went over all of the multitude of items that are regarding Prop R on the board for consent this time. We're getting a lot of stuff done. There's a lot of projects in the works. You'll see that Kennerly and Long have a lot of things coming up to bid, and as soon as we get these done, I'm going to call Scott and tell him, "Good to go, order the stuff." So there's a lot of action with Prop R stuff this month. We did also, we went through everything else, the budget, the finances, and at the end of the meeting, we had some time that we were engaging in some of the legislation about local taxes and some of the things that the House has on the table for proposals for property taxes. So the group was lively and engaged, and I think they got some fire underneath them about the future of revenue for the district, so it was a really good meeting.
Thank you. Dr. Sparks?
So last week, we had Teaching and Learning Board Advisory. We prefaced with the group what we would be doing over the course of the year, starting with the fact that we're going to be bringing a literacy plan to you in November. So they are going to be providing us feedback on that draft and giving input before going into the final development of that. We also took time to really delve into the Teaching and Learning Compass, so we moved them through three groups to look at our three primary goals on a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, continual professional learning and growth, and then our academic achievement goal as well. So our purpose with doing that was really to deep dive into the clarity of what the work that we're doing and get any input from them, as well as to understand what further topics they really want to study, which really ended up being college and career readiness and a lot of our work around real-world learning. So we'll add those topics into future meetings. Student life, the focus this year on student life is going to be a lot of social emotional learning work. This is a year where we will be reviewing resources for future purchase, so we'll, we'll engage the student life board advisory into that. It was also Suicide Prevention Week when we met, so we spent some time talking about what are the state policies and what are the procedures that we follow within Lindbergh, and got some really good feedback from parents around their engagement and what they would want to see in terms of when we are doing those those lessons. There's communication that happens already, but some, some ways that we can increase that and improve that so families can follow up with their children.
Thank you. Mr. Dominic Jagi.
At the Technology Board Advisory, we have, one of our compass goals is to create a annual technology survey. So we presented some data on our Securi data and also some of our, some of our help desk data, so that way we can spark some questions and make sure that we're providing the service that we should be providing and get, what we would like to do with the survey is get some questions that are relevant to today and some questions that would be relevant over time, so we could see how we're doing over time. So that's what we talked about.
Thank you. Dr. Brian McKinney. All right, thank you. And Beth Johnson?
I know, I just told Tara, don't forget, I get the microphone tonight. So we had our very first communications board advisory meeting, and being the first meeting that we've had, we went over our meeting topics, which are the five strategies in our communications plan that are also our compass goals. So that will be a topic for each meeting. We also got some feedback on Parent Square. We got some feedback on the website redesign, and we talked about back-to-school communication, and also just became a more general conversation of how do we help parents navigate all of our communication successfully and navigate the process of being a Lindbergh parent successfully. So two projects we'll work on this year with feedback from our committee will be a welcome packet for new families once they register that helps bridge the gap between registration and the first day of school for our brand-new families. And then in complementing that, A, we'll develop some protocols for communication for our staff and families that just helps all of our families to better understand what tools they need, where to find information, and who to contact, things like that. So we had a good first meeting.
Awesome, thank you. We'll move on to action items by consent. Are there any consent agenda items anyone wishes to remove for individual consideration?
I don't want to remove any, but I'll be abstaining.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further requests or declarations? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion to approve the September 16, 2025 consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Kristi and a second by Julia. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero with Andy Lawson abstaining from the vote this evening. Okay, 10.01, intent to use construction management at risk, which is also known as CMAR. So to open discussion, do I have a motion to disclose the intent to use construction management at risk method for various projects related to the April 2024 bond proposition with no tax rate increase?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Andy and a second by Megan, but we're going to have a discussion first. So are there any discussion or questions about this?
So just why we're doing this, and it's been shared with you through board packet updates, is we need to have somebody help us really determine what the scope of work at Concord and Sappington and some other projects down the road that we, as we finish out the main ones that we said to the community we for sure will do, we've actually, our budgets are coming in really good and few change orders and contingencies not being spent, so we're going to be able to do some work that we thought maybe would have to be pushed to a future prop. So we are looking really, really good in that situation. So we want to bring, and you guys are familiar, obviously, we've done a lot of CMAR projects, and it's to help us get the architect and a contractor together and say, "This is what we would like to do at Sappington and Concord. How much is that going to cost us? What can we do, what we can't?" Instead of our people saying, securing bids and getting people in the buildings, we just feel this is the best approach to kind of combine all that last little bit of work that we have. All projects should be done around, we should be finished with most everything 27, 28 school year.
And I feel like we've really, this process has done really well for the district.
It's been amazing. Yes. And again, the threshold is a $3 million, so altogether, these projects will be at least $3 million.
Any other questions? Okay, great. So we did have a motion by Andy and a second by Megan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. All right, moving on to for the record. We have three for the record reports this evening. 11.01.01, it's the 2026, 2027 school calendar first reading. 11.01.02, Title I Program Evaluation. And 11.01.03, Special School District Partnership. These items are listed as informational only. Board members should reach out to Dr. Tara Sparks or Ms. Joel Scheivel with any questions. Moving on to 11.03, Review of Board Policies and Procedures, we have a first reading on Board Policy KG. This policy will be brought back to a future meeting seeking approval. Procedures IGBB-AP1 and KG-AP1 are listed here as informational only. Board members should reach out to Dr. Brian McKinney with any questions. 12.0, Return to Closed Session. We've already conducted all of our closed session business, therefore, there is no need to return, so we will move to 13.01, Adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Board meeting 1623.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Jen and a second by Andy. All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero. Board meeting 1623 is adjourned.